Look at. And they had plume models and that they showed us. And then it showed the corridor. And how far that plume could travel and would typically travel. It's hard to guess because you don't know what wind is, but the good news is is wind dissipates the carbon much quicker. Obviously, the two things that they, you know, if they would have, they would, they would hope the day would be warm and windy. Because then it would dissipate really fast. And they actually were showing this rupture that just happened. And they were showing where the people were up next to the fence on the uphill wind side from that. And they were taking readings, the fire service. And they were taking readings of it and it was basically, I mean, they were standing there and everything was within normal parameters and. They're relatively close, I mean, so.
I mean, yeah, weather is going to be the big factor.
Yeah.
In every gas regardless of the CO2 natural or.
Who puts this plume model together?
Well, this was, this was their study. And I don't know, they, they didn't just do it alone, they, they, but you know, they, they put this, this plume study together because this is theirs. And, uh, you know, they showed where if it's, and they, and they talked about like the different types of ruptures, whether it's a puncture. And a puncture will like, like, you know, that was a seal that broke down or was a bad seal down there in the one down in Louisiana. And so it shot it out through that seal. And basically it will shoot at that, and if the wind was blowing this way and it was shooting that way, it'll, it'll make the plume do a. An arch like that and it'll be higher and it'll actually kind of stay up there to that elevation and dissipate. And so, I mean, if you were on the ground and that stayed high enough, it might not even, so. She was saying that because you know, I was under the impression that this carbon, no matter what it do, it would be, it would always find its low point, but. She said, that just depends on how fast it dissipates and the temperatures and stuff. And then like the one where the Satarsha where there was a, they called it a guillotine fracture where it just cuts completely in half. And, uh, that one, the liquid poured out and then it came down because it was on a steeper hill, it poured down. And then that was part of the problem there. But if I was interested, I think that that might've been a, a learning fracture. Because boy, there's, there's, seems to me, there's a lot more precautions now than what they, I mean, in particular, trainings for the fire service and how to deal with it. So then I did ask, you know, because I'm sitting there, she's talking about it, I started thinking. Well, when we have an ammonia or an anhydrous leak, we can use a fire, a water wall to keep that gas away from the guys. When they're trying to get up to shut the tank off or whatever the case may be. And, uh. I said, how can, I said, is there any way we can direct that? And I said, like, would a water wall help with the carbon? And she said, no, that wouldn't do anything for this, but she says them big fans that you guys use would help direct it. So we could like, just say it was coming and floating, now just use the hospital for instance, luckily the hospital is high. But like, say it would come up towards the hospital, we could actually set up a bank of fans and push it away from the hospital. Is, is how it was explained, so I thought, well, that's, at least it gives us a little bit of chance to fight for a place that would be hard to evacuate, you know? But they said that this. If, uh, stand in place, you know, where they secure yourself in place, shut your windows, turn your AC off and all that kind of stuff, which would be hard to do in the hospital. That's why I asked about, could we direct it away? But they said that actually, you know, worked, worked very effectively and it dissipated pretty fast. And then they started telling us about how they can shut it off and where the valves are. And because of our river and, and rail and that, we've got. There was at least three valves that I seen on that little map that they had, you know, that would be above ground. And so then obviously we're, we're concerned about, you know, like, they, they'll monitor that very close. Knowing that they're, you know, like with the one down there in Louisiana. That was where a weak spot was found to be, was in the gasket there in one of them, in one of the above ground pipes. And they actually had a photo of that and it was shooting out. And it was a big white cloud because as it hit the atmosphere, you see, you could see it. And, uh, now the Satarsha one had that. Oh, shoot, what's it called?
Kind of other gas.
So the, the rotten egg smell gas that they put in there for Captain. Yeah, anyway, that was, uh, creates the haze. So that's why the people could see that now ours obviously won't have that in it if we would get this pipeline. It won't have that in it. But, uh. It really didn't show it moving that far away from the pipeline in their models. You know, except for in the case of wind, but then it would do, it would, it would basically dissipate pretty darn fast if the wind was driving it away. So it was really a great briefing and so I talked to him about being able to do that. With, uh, like our hospital and stuff like that, and I have talked to Erin and she'd like, she, she, some of her providers would really like to. Participate in that, so. If, you know, if a couple of us went up there with that too, and be more than just two of us, then I would know about it. Um, I, I've, you know, from all the stuff that we've seen, you know, I guess you take. Both sides of the story or both sides of the equation and you kind of mix them together and, and I actually feel like I'm getting a better picture. Of what, you know, what our dangers could be. And so obviously we, I talked to a lot, a lot about the, the fire service and what they're going to do. And I said, so if we needed some more of these big fans. She said, yes, we would be willing to participate in that.
I'm not questioning that because I'm just reading the emergency guide book on this and it says use water spray to reduce vapors and divert vapor cloud.
See, and that's why I asked that.
I would assume.
That's where my mind.
Very soon as, as in hydro ammonia, so.
Yeah.
Water will take that to ground.
That's what I was assuming. So I mean, and maybe, you know, maybe there's, there's, you know, more, more to it than, than they were, you know. Knowledgeable about as far as the, the way emergency services would handle it. But she did say that the fans would be.
And ventilate the area, so there you go, fans.
So that was my thing is I was trying to figure out more ways to get training for our guys and equipment necessary to, to help, you know? And it was even when, when you looked at the, uh, like where it was closer to Buckgrove. That plume model still had Buckgrove with, with, with a sizable little gap between that. Where the plume model ended in Buckgrove, so I, and then we're, Celestwig, Buckgrove and Denison were obviously our bigger, our communities. That were the closest to the pipeline, obviously. But it was a pretty good meeting, I mean. Now going and thinking all morning on you, I, uh.
Oh, did they, was that three valves in Crawford County that you noticed or three valves?
No, in Crawford County. There's going to be a valve on each side of the river area. And it looked to me like there was a valve being located somewhere close to, or close to Anderson.
Have they changed the, that it's going to be the actual pig launcher, remember many meetings ago it was announced?
No, there, there's a, I, we'll have a launcher.
We will have a launcher and three valves or that launcher is considered one of the valves, just because that's where you have your highest risk.
You know, the thing, here, here's, here's kind of how, and they didn't say this directly, but the way they said it, I understood it that. As you get to a facility that would use them, that's where the pipe may have to grow. So I mean, if you were six inch coming up to us. And that valve that's at Anderson's, maybe go to where you get a bigger launcher. And you also got the connection for Anderson's and I'm just hypothesizing there, don't hold them to this. You know, by listening to what they said, I think then that's where we'll get the eight inch from and then that's where a big, big launcher is what we're calling it. They actually have a nice official concern board, but you know, the launcher, the launcher section would be, I, I'm, I'm kind of understood that that's where that would be.
Okay, they've changed things around.
Oh, and I think it'll be changed again. I mean, I, I think I U B helps them decide some of this, you know, on what, what words placed, things are placed and. And so, I mean, I think they're, I, I was, I was happy that they gave us as much information as they did. To me, it shows they're trying to do their due diligence to answer the concerns of our, you know, of Tim and the, and the Cindy and Karen, you know, I, I think that, and Bonnie. I think that, that, that's, that's my concern is that we get all the best information out there to our people, you know? And obviously each, each, you know, everybody's story tends to lean towards them, so. Our job is to make sure that we investigate through to each side of the story here, you know? But, uh, it was a good meeting and they gave us as much time as we wanted, helped Cullen a lot as he was going through things. Uh, he's been doing a lot of due diligence, you know, we obviously had him in on the meeting to see if that would help him. With anything ordinance wise, you know, and, uh, he, uh, he had a lot of research already done. On the Dickinson County one and he said it was quite similar to, uh, Shelby's. I won't go into a lot of the details, I'll let him do it. But, uh, the, uh.
Who was there from Summit?
Uh, it was Riley and Kylie. Kylie's the one, the blonde haired, you know, with the, she's the engineer. Like Kylie, Kaylee and the first one of them, their names are pretty close so they can get mixed up. But yeah, I mean, and she's very knowledgeable, so I really, when I seen that she was there, I, I was relieved. You know, because she's, she really puts it in terms that we can understand what's going on. And she never really, I mean, I watch her eyes close, she never looks like she's trying to deceive you or hide anything, she's. She's really straightforward and I, I appreciate the messages that she brings. So I mean, I think we've got a pretty good story of, of what their, their information tells them. And, uh. I would, uh. Say that that's probably any, getting more questions, I mean, that'll maybe trigger my memory on what we else talked about. I mean, they don't have any idea really what's going on with I U B yet, I mean, as far as the, how everything's progressing and I don't have any answers to anything that. This was mostly just to share plume modeling and where our concerns were for development and to show. You know, that once, you know, because I was worried about, I mean, if I was a. Developer, how close would I want to build houses to this? Well, I mean, and obviously these pictures might've been down in Texas where people are. More than used to pipelines and they realize that like, we depend on corn, they depend on pipes, you know? And so we're very tolerant of our, our agriculture. Why, they're, they're very tolerant of their gas and oil industry and they realize that that's what keeps them from paying state tax, so they're probably. More, more patient with the idea than we are, but so, but they still, they built right up to along these pipelines and this was a pictures added of a carbon pipeline, so. I mean, a lot, a lot of good information. And, uh. If they have another, uh. One of these, I mean, like I said, I'm going to try to set something up for the hospital and so, you know. If you get one or two or you want to go to that, that would be. I would advise it, it was, it was very good information, I mean, I. I felt more comfortable about. The distances that they're getting it placed now, you know? Obviously I couldn't see where all the homes were, you know, farm place, the farmsteads. But. I'm, I'm assuming most of them are. You know, either participating landowners or hopefully landowners that will be some, they'll find a way, I U B will find a way to avoid them, so. Uh, let me see here. Okay, global connections. I did have a, an I E D meeting, I'd like to be able to go over my notes a little bit better, I'm just trying to keep all this one straight, so. Um, I, I thought our, well, I, I was very, you know, like we talked about the childcare centers. You know, I'm doing their, doing some fundraising, you know how Celest, or Manila does a lot of fundraising and, and Celestwy has, you know, and. And then even the imagination station's done one recently, so. When the, for the wellness center, when the, the group got together and had that, I think that thing turned out real well, that chicken. Chicken feed they had out there at the Copper Ridge last week, I think that turned out really well, boy, there was a lot of cars went through there. I know I had to get home and put my feet up. So I thought it went really well.
A lot of steps on gravel.
Yes. And you were doing a lot more walking than I was.
Well, we had to kind of keep them entertained while they.
Sitting in line.
I didn't get entertained.
It was, uh, I thought that really turned out well and so I think it was, might even inspire them that they could do a couple more. I've had, I've had a couple of people ask me about the wellness center since that event. And where, where they're at with their funding and I says, gosh, that's more jeans wheel, how she's actually on that committee, I don't know where their dollars are exactly. And they were asking about what we've gave. And how we're matching with the city, that I've kind of explained all that stuff and. And so I, most people are, once they understand, and actually what I've been reminding people is that we're one of the. Least healthy counties in the state, I mean, we're in the bottom percentile and so, I mean, things like this are actually probably important to our. Now, will everybody participate? Well, they won't if we don't have it. So we hope they will. And, uh, hopefully that'll help with our health of our county and. And, uh, so, I mean, we've got to have some of these things, I haven't. They aren't cheap. They sure aren't, uh. You know, I mean, I, I, I did, somebody was asking who was going to run it and I said, well, the city will own the property. And they'll be in charge, they'll, they'll be in charge of the maintenance. But, uh, the Y M C A will be running it, so I'm there experienced with that, so I'm pretty, I'm feeling pretty optimistic that that'll run efficiently. But, uh, I know, I've, I've, I've had several calls since then, so that's why I thought I'd. And, uh. Somebody wants to go, I want to look through my.
I'm going to just take one minute, uh, Carrie Cursey was at our public health meeting yesterday. At noon, so I kind of asked her how things were going on in Buier before she was out with that. So then she did go through Buier on her way home, uh, the original complaint on the junkyard site looks better, perfect, no, but better. So I sent Roger a quick little text to see if he's satisfied with, uh, you know, getting ready for their parade. But there's a camper that's hooked up to an unknown septic, uh, that she sent, uh, you know. What's going on with that, that was something that she wasn't really there to look at, but she noticed. And, uh, she's going to resend a certified letter to make sure they respond that that can't be hooked up to those unknown septic system right across from. What's that, so? So I'm just going to see if it, that's back thirty-two, if you want, or something. Does it agree, you know, I want to look as, but as it can, so. I was going to update on that, so Dave, do you want to go?
Yeah, I did have a lot last week, um, I did leave earlier this morning. And kind of took the back roads up here. Just to see what things look like, uh, at home, we got. Four inches of rain and there was a lot of ditches that were full and. A lot of washing happening. And then, actually I just got a text from, um, just north of Donnerie Road one mile. I might, I Gary Hall, Mount Leary, they only had an inch. So I think it's kind of widespread and you should be on like.
Yeah, just, no, it's all right, he said he had an inch and a half, we had an inch and a half. Yeah, definitely got the.
They've got the brown up down there.
Pretty much.
We got a gird spring.
I'm sure Paul, when he gets here, he, they've been out and about and they. Seen the trucks running around or assessing any damages and going from there, but.
Yeah, I think they were just working on the bees, so those are back to being pretty, pretty again. It's okay.
All I got for you, G.
All right, Kyle?
Uh, after Summit was here, I asked Riley to get whoever was in the negotiations with Dick Vincent County, so. Kaylee did call me back and we talked Wednesday about how that went. So, uh. It was a mutual, they definitely is a mutual agreement, but, uh, you know, the sixteen hundred foot came. Down from two miles, you know, Dickinson County had a two mile radius ordinance, so they brought it down. To sixteen hundred foot and. That probably will still get contested, but, uh.
Going sound like.
But. They, they're the board, that's what they put in their ordinance and figured it will end up in court over it, but, uh. So be it, you know?
So be it.
It's really, I don't, here again, like Ty said, you know, everybody's going to paint their picture a little better, so. I take it what she was saying as, you know, as her side of the truth, though I just, I'm going to leave it at that. It's like I work, it's our job to try to take both sides of the truth and try to. Cypher it out and make it what's best for our counties. Hopefully we'll get that done in a closed session, we'll be able to bring that.
And Kyle, I did talk to Tim Fairchild Supervisor from Dickinson County this morning.
Yeah, Steve Clark, you know, when I talked to, wasn't in on that negotiation, so I'm glad you got it home to somebody as well, so.
And he said, we're not trying to be so restrictive that, that it's impossible, kind of, we're just trying to be fair.
I guess fair statement, I think that's kind of our job as a board to make a.
We get a look at the big picture.
That square deal for, there you go, for all the taxpayers, but. Uh, yes, center meeting, uh, Friday. Most of the talk was M H I with Mental Health Institute is. Must be going through some personnel changes, as we rent facilities from them, but we haven't received a bill for. Rent since like last August, so I know they must have a new financial person come in there and said, well, you need to pay this in full and. We said, uh, Cheryl said, well, we need an invoice. So. And they didn't want to produce an invoice, so you know, you can't pay anything without an invoice, so. So there's been some argument about that, but through that, there's starting to question with the whole new mental health groups, uh. The realignment. There's some fear that they might actually close that mental health part up there. But yeah, keep it open for, uh. Uh, CUSO, which is the sexual assault and sexual predator type wing that houses them people, so. And with that. There's a lot of talk about stuff that we can't control, but. That went on for way too long, I had to call the oriental order that, you know, let's stay focused on what we can control, but. Uh, and negotiating rent and, uh, negotiating a fair payment schedule on. What we had was how we got reeled back in, so. Seem like they only get together once a month and they want to talk about everything under the sun, but no flooding. Rain once, uh. Really, other than that, kind of business as usual up there, numbers were down slightly for the month of April. But, uh, it's really all I had, uh, with city center, we kind of discussed that already. So I might get a chance to sneak over there to see, it sounds like really moving along really fast, so.
Got that move, wall moved back out, I was glad that somebody noticed that before we got it drywalled, but that was an easy fix and. Took Louise over there to make sure that her door for her closet is on the right side of the wall, there was a little misunderstanding of whether she wanted to be in the office or out at lobby. So got that straightened out, you know? Puts here and there, but.
Always construction.
But, uh, we did, uh, to piggyback off of that, take the floor samples down and I think you're probably in on picking what, what you thought would be a nice universal.
It'd be good.
So that's all, they had that particular one that everybody picked in stock. Which is going to blend very nicely with the door choices and the counter, uh, I think the countertops have been kind of ordered and so things are moving along. Uh, where we're focusing is on Jake's room to get that actually drywalled. Before we start anything else so that he can get all of his things in there because nothing can happen until we have our internet over there. And so that's, it's been holding it up all this time, the water has been rerouted and it's no longer in that room, so we can start doing that. And that's where Larry, Harry and Cory Gasco come in to get that, uh, electrical, because they're going to need to, uh, put that hole in the, uh. Wall to there, the concrete wall and get that shackle and I understand that's going to happen here this week, that's what I'm hearing. Once we get Jake stuck in there, things will go really fast.
I got some more than a few.
All right, you ready?
Yeah.
We'll go back to you.
Okay, then it was the, uh, on the I E D, this was actually the, probably the, one of the trainings that I was waiting for most. And it got into the details of what we need to look for in our county, you know, what, what, what are we lacking? And, and understanding our. You know, we've, we've all got a pretty good understanding of what we've got for people. You know, what we've got for land and what we've got, but we don't have, we're, we have nothing shovel ready anymore, I mean, we've talked about that before, that there's no. You know, no industrial park, so to speak, there's no spec buildings of any type, um, are, while we've got. Fairly decent two lane infrastructure. Most, most of your outside of a site, and I, we don't have to always be searching for a mega company. You know, I mean, and that's certainly not what I'm looking for, but even, even your smaller production type companies. Rail, we've got nailed, I mean, we, we get with the C N and the U P, I mean. That is our huge asset for us, so I mean, that's one of our exploitable assets. Uh, the fact that the community is starting to, you know, look at more wellness type things, employers are looking at that. It's, um, it's probably in the, the bottom third, depending on the type of company they are. You know, if they're a wellness company, obviously they're looking for a lot of wellness type things, but I mean. Something like Jefferson's got the place that does weight equipment and stuff over there, you know, I'm talking about the fitness equipment. Somebody like that's obviously looking for a place that's fitness oriented, but. Um, you want to stay in your cluster, you know, and why I've always said that we want to stay. Ag oriented, but we don't necessarily need to stay protein oriented, you know? Um, you guys got a lot of row crop around here and you're very productive consistently, you know? Grandpa Keating used to always say, our, our old hills don't always do the best, but they always do. So we've got a good, consistent crop, crop ground around here that always produces good and steady. So exploiting what the Andersons have already. Started with, you know, and, and, you know, look into sustainable aviation fuels or stuff like that. That if this pipeline would come in, it would be beneficial and create a large need for corn supplies, you know? And, uh, that would really help us out, be beneficial and, uh. Those are like the one that, that, you know, that Jasper County is already kind of assuming that this comes in, you know? Jasper County is already in negotiations with them, maybe they're even further along by now. But, uh, anywhere you build these in the state, they're going to be helpful because using part of our corn spire. But, uh, obviously we'd like to see stuff like that, so you want to stay cluster oriented. So at that, Paul and I and Stephanie Wees have sat down over at the CDC. And we're going to start to build a little team. With, with some of the other CDC members and state and create another. Economic Development Organization, an E D O and, uh. You know, basically a committee task force, whatever you want to call it, and try to start working on these things, you know? We, we know that we need the industrial park, you know, that's, that's, that's a chief concern, you know, because. Everybody likes a winner. So if you get, if you start having wins, that'll start to produce more wins. And, and I mean, when I'm sitting in this meeting, that's the stuff you're hearing from these guys, you know, they're talking about. The different things that you need to set at bench, benchmarks, you know, for your creating, you're elevating your competitive standing against other counties. Not only in your area, but nationally, you know, so every county is your competition. And, but you don't have to try to keep up with the Joneses, just because Carol gets a pellet doesn't mean we need a pellet, you know, I mean. You still want to stick to your cluster, I mean, we've got, we've got, with wit, we've got a good training source that will, in my understanding, is extremely flexible. To meet the needs of what our industry base is here in Crawford County. So. Number of things that are extremely important to future potential employers. And obviously a lot of our mom and top industry or our smaller businesses feed off of what our bigger ones are, so it's our job to try to help with CDC. To bring in these, you know, two hundred and fifty to the five hundred people, but, you know, some of this stuff, you know. Um, you know, like, like usually a sustainable aviation fuel. They may require two hundred to four hundred acres, they may have a one point two billion dollar facility, but only need fifty people. Well, then, then you're not stressing and straining on, on our, our present stalwarts in the community, whether it's Smithfield, Monogram, Petersons, you know, P C I, any of these. You're not, you're not having to drain their employee resources, so. You know, all these things is what we're taking into consideration and that's basically, you know, what they're teaching in these things here, but. I mean, I, I could sit here and give you the whole darn class, I mean, it's, it was, this one was actually my favorite we've had so far, I mean, they, they broke everything down in these little. I mean, how, you, you're right here, do you understand how your location profiles against corporate expansion factors, okay? So what a corporation, like this, let's say Smithfield decided they wanted to expand. I mean, do we even suit their needs? You know, if they wanted to expand, I mean, and are we talking with them? To make sure we're suiting their potential future needs, I mean, obviously it's easier to keep people, or you hope it is. To keep good people than it is to go out and try to bring somebody new in. But I asked, once again, I asked, and these are all different speakers that we've had in each of these trainings. So I asked this one, like, he, and he, he, he basically pinpointed like Europe or, or, or eat. The parts of Asia that, you know, not, 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 not China in particular. I mean, there may be some industry in China that would be interested in Crawford, uh, Crawford County, but. You know, more of your small ag type people that are wanting to either. Move to their, be able to buy things here to move to their production sources or, or, or vice versa, want to move their production here. And then moves to, and to take back home, then, then you'd be more. You got to look at these countries, you know, like India's got a ton of workforce, so they don't need to come here for workforce, they got, if they need to build a factory for workforce, they'll do it in India, you know, they got their second to China. They're second to China in in population. But you know, you might have another country over there that's got a small population and they need something, so they may actually move here. Uh in particular, Europe, they got a lot more taxes, they got, you know, less room to expand. I mean, if you ever look at a map of Europe at night, it looks like a one city, you know. There's a few dark spots in there, but there are a few. So I mean, they don't have a lot of room for expansion, and if it's an ag thing, you know, they don't uh. That this needs a larger area of ground. So these are the different things that we're looking at, and I'm trying to summarize here a little bit. I know I can get long winded, but. The uh. Let's see, I mean, key, they're key takeaways, you know, and you see your community at street level, you know. Look at uh, look at it as a an employer that would come here. Or an an industry, what what they would come look at, you know, looking at your people, they're looking at your your quality of life assets. And and I will, I I will stress housing is important, but housing will follow motivated employees. If, you know, I'm, look at what we do. We drive to Omaha. We have people that go to Omaha every day to work because there's a good job there. Uh they don't want to move there because there's too many people there. That's why I said, I think we want to look at, would it would it be nice to have a Crawford that had twenty five to thirty five thousand people? Sure it would, but I'd like to see that around the whole county and every one of our communities. Manila and Sleswig are great development areas. I mean, we could, because of their flatter ground, I mean, we could exploit the west side, actually could jump into that, too. They've got some flatter ground to the to the west side there, you know. But you know, the uh. Those are the things that we need to learn to exploit that we're not presently really exploiting, you know, and and you know, that was something that. When I, when I was trying to help with the hiring of the new director over there at CDC, you know, Evan did a great job of the things he did, but this really wasn't a big focus for him. Now, he did do some things that allow the community to know about, but it really wasn't what he pushed. And I think when you're when you're talking to development director, you go on in developing. And uh I think the housing will come because if the developers see a solid business coming in, the housing people will show up. I I do believe that because they'll see where they're, they can, if they can see where they can make money, people will show up. So I think that'll help, you know, and then. Obviously, uh ci- the city of Dennison's are always active in their pursuits of that anyway, so. Let's see, positioning.
Tagging that, who?
Yeah.
Who put that on? I I I missed that in the beginning.
What I'm talking about?
Yes.
This is my in international economic development task force through NACO.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's what this one is. It's one of my NACO committees, task force. This is a, this is actually brand new last year.
Okay.
So we just started doing this in the last annual conference.
Okay.
And I was one of them that they selected to be on there. I'm the only supervisor from the state that's actually on that, our state. Uh and then the chair of this task force, uh Branton, is. The Erie, Pennsylvania, Erie County, Pennsylvania. He is their executive. I think he's in charge of, they do it different in different states, so it's hard to compare it to anything that we have, but you know, it'd be like a. County level CDC, you know, we've talked about that even before. But uh. He has got a master's in economic development. He's an old West pointer. This guy is sharp as earth, man, he's razor sharp. And really, really knows the subject well, so he's guiding this task force in the probably committee status eventually to help our counties out there to develop, you know, and. So counties that are motivated and want to be more, I mean, I I brought up that twenty five to thirty five. I mean, that's my theory, because. While I love the idea of developing and making and basically creating a larger tax base where we can lower the individual tax asking for each person. We still want to be able to look up at night and see the stars. I mean, that's what most of the people live here love, you know, we love our space.
That's the first thing my daughter looks forward to when she comes home from Phoenix.
Exactly.
Go outside at night so that you can see the stars.
See the stars. So you, we, I, and from my perspective, we don't ever want to lose that.
No.
But we would like to see a little more development, you know, and and I would like to see that development, a shared. A shared issue of from all of our communities, you know, whoever wants to be involved. I mean, if you're happy being. You know, if Buck Grove's happy being Buck Grove, more power to them. But if if they wanted to be part of the growing, you know, thing and, you know, jump in and promote their community as well, let's let's get them on the market, too. You know, that's, to me, those are the things that CDC needs to propel forward with, and so I've been trying to bring all this information over to them, so. And I'm gonna tell you, Stephanie Wees. She could probably help give some of these classes, so she's already got this stuff down. There, I got us Paul.
Oh, we're about to enforce with Sal.
A big show?
What we carry? Well, we were lucky. Shelby County, no, it's range you get down here, yeah. Yeah. sounded like a.
I'm filming it.
I heard four to seven.
I drove down. We had some ditches full, we had some.
Yeah, Sean's down there right now driving around taking a look. Said the roads look really good. So that's good to hear.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't grab all the way up there. They firm.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes it helps, you know, as it. Anyhow, um. Yeah, not a whole lot of new stuff here. Um you know, just one uh. Utility permit, it's underground electric, and our fiber guys continue to work, we continue to monitor that and. Yeah, it's going all right, but.
No.
They they do.
About calls the other day, because I want to give you and your department credit, because they were working on one forty one the other day with that fiber. I bought round over the flagger. Right over hill, no signage, nothing. And then all of a sudden, there's a flagger standing in the middle of the road.
That up on the camel camel hub?
Yeah.
I bucked it, too. Yeah, there's a huge liability, because anybody that's working on a roadway has to follow MUTCD, which.
Not one sign mentioned. There was a roadwork ahead sign, two miles.
Yeah.
Or utility sign, you know.
The only thing alerted you, some of their equipment was.
No early warning devices about a flagger or one lane road or nothing, it's like.
And then he was hanging out there in the roadway.
Yeah, and like right over the crest of the hill.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we 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 do try. I mean, I mean, well, they're not following the rules they shut down. We shut them down.
I mean, it does happen. Last week down on I eighty, a DOT employee got killed due to.
Jack's nephew was with the guy. He was in the truck with the guy. He's telling me about that. It's terrible thing.
So it does happen.
Oh, yeah.
I can see how it could.
Yeah, I don't know all the details, but he said it was not good.
But I just give you and your staff and employees credit for always. Means putting a valiant effort to be doing the right thing.
Yeah.
Children employee.
Well, you know, I just had a safety briefing with, we had a new part time guy start this morning, yesterday morning, the bridge crew, and you know, we always have these safety briefings, and I said, you know. At the end of the day, here's the deal. I want you to leave the same way you came.
Yeah.
Every day.
Yep.
And you have to be your own advocate. I can sit here and talk about all these different things, but at the end of the day, you've got to be the person, too, that's out there, that's watching your surroundings and making sure that you're. Doing things safe, and if you don't feel safe, you gotta. Tell somebody, you know, don't do that. But um yeah, when you're working in construction, it's. Dangerous by design and you combine that with the traveling public and you got, you know, some.
Pretty dangerous.
Some pretty dangerous situations that could occur, so, yeah, but thank you. Bridge replacement, I think I shared with you last week, you know, it's, the rain is delayed most contractors, so it's gonna be late June, early July now. Just got to wait to see how that all plays out, so we're getting one of those really wet seasons and the ground is saturated now, so a lot of what we get is gonna run off.
Boy, you called a pause. We were in Vail and you fly, it's just stuck with me. We are gonna see a return back to a wet here.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't throw them toe runs away.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah, and you're sitting right, I mean, you kind of learned, but you know, that we're working on the bridge over at Bay or at West Side. And they they moved the crane down and drive the pier pod, so we could get close enough to get the leads, the hammer and the leads and stuff on. I didn't bring my phone up, but I can show you, and I'll send you the video. Being honest, I come in this morning, I said, did we move the crane out last night? And uh we hadn't, so it's up now, but you know, you just, you gotta always be kind of thinking of those things, because we've had this four or five years of not. Having any concerns about what happens, but I mean, all these channels could be full tomorrow morning. Depending on what happens, I don't know what the forecast, you know, is gonna happen, but nobody planned on getting four to seven inches in Harlan, I'm sure, last night. But um. That could be uh a problem, so we, you know, we just have to prepare. And plan for those things, so.
Recommend they get the church hall more frequently.
But uh, yeah, um so the metal shop is coming along, uh they got, they're working on the doors, they'll wear doors. And the plumbing, electrical, and the uh the heating, so. If if you get a chance, that's probably one of the most, of all the shops that we've built, I would say the best quality in the build.
In the building.
Finished, trimmed, everything. It's just a really nice building. They did a great job on the floor. And so it's coming together.
It looks good where it's at, really.
Yeah, it it is all, we get it, we get it all done, we're gonna have a really nice yard, so. Remind Adam, if he wants to get a quote, and I kind of like to have that maybe in the next week or so. And I talked to him about a week, ten days ago, but. I've got one in and I'd like to kind of compare the two and get those guys going, because I think after July first, as soon as we can get that thing in, we're gonna get the slab in and.
Be done.
Be done with it. Yeah.
I guess it's good to stand.
Well, I I don't know, but just, you know, maybe if you want to remind him.
I will.
If he's interested, if he's not, just let me know one way or the other, so. The uh. Great crew, uh yeah, it's just, it's going slow, and, and we talked about kind of slowing things down, too, a little bit this year and. Um maybe putting one of those guys or two of those guys in trucks to hog or outhole or, you know, whatever, and, you know. You you get into the year where you're starting to pay crop damages, we don't have a whole lot of stuff hooked for twenty twenty five. So we'll probably kind of back off just a little bit throughout the summer months until we get, you know, I mean, depends on where we're at, I guess, in what we're doing, but.
Don't want us knocking over the crop, you know.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, there's no point destroying a growing crop. So we may, you know, pick and choose where we go, maybe do some of that, but uh we don't have a big backlog of projects. Was my point.
Paul, you've been saying we're probably gonna start transitioning to that, so.
Yeah. But I know one guy called, who did the project probably ten, twelve years ago, and he he was out driving around, he said, I just want to call him, you know, it's W Avenue down there by down down low.
Oh, yeah.
East of Highway thirty there, or south, I should say, but anyhow, um.
That was all the trouble.
And uh terrible road there, and he said, boy, I just want to tell you how nice it is, which was good.
Good to hear. Two thousand eight.
Yeah.
There was a hole in that road you get to park the stool bus in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it would, and you would have room for a couple more cars, that's how bad that road was.
Oh, my gosh.
And, you know, the level B roads don't look real good right now in a lot of areas. But we had ten, probably going on twelve inches of rain now in the last three and a half weeks, so it has to stay dry, so we can get out there, but. But we can't.
We're good with our past three year average of rain.
Pretty much. We haven't got this much rain in the last three summers. But, you know, we'll we'll get it fixed up, so. I'll, if it's all right, uh I'll drop down to uh. Item six and seven, uh because I think we've got till, what, eleven or ten oh five for the uh. Probably carrying in the final order. Um so this is Hay Avenue up by Dean Arden Singers and Renee Klausens to do the road, that little short section going past that. Uh Casey Buck is going to be building a uh a house in there, and he was wondering if uh. If that road could be reclassified. It's got gates on it. He'd like to see the gates come off of it. And the, you know, the only difference between a level C and a level B is a level C has gates and a level B doesn't. And that's basically the fundamental difference, so. Um he'd like to see it come off of that short section, so I said, well, I talked to the board, we'd have to have a public hearing, let everybody weigh in.
We'd have to do a bunch of work to that, though. No, I don't know quite what.
No, it's not, and I'm not going from a level B to a level A, this is going from a level C to a level B, which just takes the gates off. He didn't want anything done to the road. He just wants the gates off.
So why does he want the gates off? Just for equipment or?
He just don't want to have to deal with opening and shutting gates all the time. And somebody else opening and shutting gates all the time.
Yeah, won't keep anybody out, that's the way.
You know, so that's the thing, so, you know.
So do we need to get that on the agenda then?
Yeah, it'd have to be a notice of public hearing, and a public hearing, just like we're doing with these level B roads where we're vacating, so, you know, and let everybody, everybody will be notified. You know, about the change in classification, so that's how it works.
I believe, why didn't you add it on the agenda?
Reverse order.
It is reversing it, yes.
How long ago did we take it from a little B to a level C?
That's probably been about twenty years ago, yeah.
Was that because they're having problems with people putting trash out there or what?
That was the gate, well, the the main, the main reason people want a level C road with gates. Is because people are going up there and doing things they probably shouldn't be doing, trying to restrict the public access to it. In this particular case, he's gonna have a home at the end of it, and he doesn't want to have to open and shut a gate every time he goes in and out.
Makes sense.
Does make sense, so you can gravel it to him.
So uh.
Will he end up?
Yeah, he'll put gravel on it himself, and actually, the owners, prior to me, put gravel on it. You know, and they're the ones that requested that it be a level C, and so uh he's just wanting it to go the other way. Doesn't want anything done with the road, happy with the road the way it is, he'll take care of whatever he needs to do as far as snow removal and gravel. He just doesn't want to have to get out and open a gate every time. Think it works there to get to himself.
Freely, the the adjacent owners would not be opposed to this.
We'll find out.
We'll find out at a public hearing. That's why we have the public hearing.
They'll be notified if they have a problem, you know, take those.
I think it's an opportunity. That's why you have the public hearing. It's an opportunity for everybody to come in and express their concerns, but if someone has a house up there and they're living up there. I mean, it probably changes the dynamic.
Right.
Quite a bit.
Yeah. That would. Maybe on the agenda. Eliminate maybe some of that questionable activity going in and out here, if there's a house at the end of that, to keep an eye on that, so.
I agree. I said it on the agenda, so it can be discussed and everybody notified and all that good stuff.
Yep, so. Uh the FEMA disaster declaration, Crawford County did receive it, and the Manila utilities is probably the primary reason why that got, you know, and. I got a call on Friday and I told him, you know, we might have thirty to fifty thousand dollars worth of damage that can be added to that, but we're uh. We've got to get it in by the end of the day today. We're gonna capture all the gravel, you know, that we had to add to the roads and the debris cleanup that we had down in the Manila area. I'll see where that lands, and then, I don't know, this will be kind of one of those declarations where it was declared on April twenty sixth, night of the event. And ongoing, sometimes they do, you know, so like. We had four inches down the. Down city area again, uh you know, uh and so we're putting more gravel in spots where the road's over top. Um supposed to keep, continue to keep track of that, and they're all in somewhere.
All that, you know, Chuck's pleasure.
He will be, he will be starting us in this morning at about seven o'clock.
Chuck's playbook, Chuck always did a good job of uh. Get them axled.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wow.
So, yeah, yeah, uh but we'll uh we'll see where that ends up. So we'll just go keep keep track of it, and yeah, so.
Perfect.
And then I I know I mentioned last week the the Hunger Canyons meeting next, not this Friday, but next Friday, the thirty first. Tried to save paper by using the shorter sheet. Anyhow, I guess we'll uh. If you guys have anything, oh, one other thing, uh Highway thirty nine, this is really nice that the DOT is starting to do this, or I don't know, maybe they haven't, we just haven't gotten them, but. Uh this is an advanced notification on a bridge replacement on Highway thirty nine, so it'll be up. Um you go north to the county line on thirty nine and you go east about a quarter of a mile or a half mile, there's a bridge there. You know, so the road will be closed again in twenty twenty six, so. And uh just to let you know.
Twenty twenty six.
That road will be a super highway when it's all done, because we don't have a whole lot of traffic for the last three years.
Well, thanks to seeing tax dollars getting spent in West Two Highway, so.
Well, it absolutely is, and I said, you know, we we are not complaining, I mean, there's there's a few challenges with that Highway thirty nine project. But you know, I'm okay with whatever they're doing up there because we're gonna have a nice highway when it's done.
And it's a long traveled highway.
It it has a tremendous amount of truck traffic on it, and so it's gonna be really nice when it's done, so we just all have to be patient, and.
Word when they're starting and salted them, so on that bridge replacement.
You know, uh I go back to that Kirk Johnson, and he's gonna come down here sometime in June, we're gonna meet, but right now, it's it's a July timeframe.
And I'm sure the weather is slowing them down as well.
Back to them as well, yeah, so. Anyhow, that's what we have there. Um the guys are mowing, um the uh roadside. Uh try to get all that done for Memorial Day weekend, um. It felt like a Monday this morning, I'll just talk about a few other things quick. Had a conversation with Lowell Miller with the, with the Kelvin Burns and we're working with the UP Railroad on the bridge out here. And that's always a challenge with them and then they, they kinda switched to new management, so we're gonna have to jump through it. A few more loopholes on that, but um, we'll see where that all lands, I guess I don't wanna get into a lot of details, cause we don't know what'll happen, but it's uh, it's becoming a challenge. You know, and, and my argument is what we have there is way less desirable than what they're requesting us to do as far as pier placement. It's all comes down to pier placing, is what it's all about, and vertical clearance. And so uh, I guess we can just let the bridge there for the next fifty years, make a deal with that. Cause our pier placement is much better than what currently exists. Uh, so, but anyhow, we'll see where that all lands.
And they don't see it that way, that what your?
They're right away to sacred grounds, they don't want anything in it, okay? That's about as clear as I can be. Which becomes a real, it becomes problematic for us because the longer your span, the deeper your period of beams and the higher road has to go up. And we gotta match Highway thirty, which makes the grade coming off Highway thirty steeper unless you raise Highway thirty, which is not gonna happen.
Not gonna happen. The guy you're talking to, is he an engineer at all, or is he just?
But anyhow, you know, they have their jobs to do and we have our jobs to do, and then we have to figure out how we can negotiate to get it to where we, where we could all agree on something. And I'm trying to follow up on this, but our, our two Mack dump trucks, uh, they're supposed to be delivered in June. And now it sounds like that might be November a little later, and so, which was surprising news. So I gotta follow up and find out what's going on there, so, yeah, anyhow, felt like a Monday.
Well, we kinda knew going in there, everyone would be a a compromise about.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't gonna be easy.
We'll get something figured out. We, we, what we always do is just uh, sometimes a challenge.
It happens every day, there's somebody working over, it just gotta.
We're dealing with new people. Okay, and that, that was always the challenge with the BNSF down here, trying to do something with those railroad crossings. Is that, you know, you work with someone for a year or two and then all of a sudden that someone moves on and then you start off with someone new. And you start all over and finally we were able to, and Dave, you knew that, you were involved in several conversations, finally we were able to get some sort of compromise, and it was a good one. It really was, cause that probably didn't work, brand new million dollar bridges, what we did.
It was good. They're happy they didn't lose the road.
We still got the crossing, we got a decent bridge, you know, they're not perfect, but it, it, it works.
And it'll last a long time.
It'll be there for the next twenty five, thirty years, so, yeah.
Now, the underpasses, that might be a different story, they, maybe even a little more than.
That's their, yeah, exactly, so.
I can make a motion.
Got one minute.
By the time we vote on it, it'll be. Open a public hearing.
Alright, second, alright, all favor I? We're in a public hearing at this time, uh, for the vacation time roadway segment, all that part of uh, two hundred and seventy third street line more, the door, Royal Guard in west half of section twenty four, uh, T eight four N. Uh, R thirty nine W and all of the part of the unnamed roadway line east of Billard Royal Guard in the southwest quarter, northeast quarter, section five. T eighteen four north, R thirty eight W, Terry has that, and I just read it for her, so. Alrighty, so any objection written or oral?
No.
Alright, do we get everybody that's on the uh, Zoom meeting?
Not yet, my pen's smoking.
Alright.
Working on it.
Oh, you haven't heard anything about this, have you?
Everybody wants it that's out there, so actually, you know, one of the landowners stopped last night and was excited that it was gonna be finally closed and we'll put gates on the one, the other one.
Just move some around the corner, huh?
The um, good point.
There you go.
We could do that.
I was always thinking.
Yeah, um, but anyhow, that's all they want, you know, so we always operate on a roadway vacation. Either we gate the end of it, or we obliterate the end of it to make it so it doesn't look like a road anymore. So they want gates up.
Okay.
So that's what we plan on doing, but they're, they're excited to get this done.
Terry, no more discussion? Do we wanna close the uh, public hearing?
Make our motion.
All favor I? Any opposed, same sign, alright, public hearing is now closed. So now we need a motion to approve the final order of vacating the following roadway segment, same as what I read before.
Second.
Any discussion, was a call vote, all favor I? Any opposing, sign, chair votes I, motion has been approved.
So you have a, maybe a rask about it.
I appreciate that very much.
You got that. Yeah, and then you just need to sign that, and that is that. Reported with the Yeah, this, this is good for everybody, we're happy to see that. So we just get a copy of that sometime.
Alright.
What is all I have?
There we go, well, we got that done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Hopefully, we start what we do.
I know, you do a good job.
You're driving around down south, give me a call.
I will, that sounds good, might be down there later today.
Rachel, you are up. How's it going, Rachel?
I'm okay, thanks everybody.
Good.
Good, how are you?
I'm having a rough couple of weeks, but I'm here and I made it up the stairs.
Oh, yeah, that's right, well, good to see ya. Alrighty, so, we are here to discuss the rate and there's some uh, good information concerning why we need to look at that, so you're proposing, you wanna just go forward with your program?
Sure, um, anybody not seen my email?
I saw it.
Alright.
Trying to find it.
Um, so I'm recommending an increase for med examiner pay from one hundred and mileage per call to three hundred per call. Um, and I shared some rationale on why with one of the biggest indicators being trying to compensate at a rate that's on par with the state average. And as you guys know, I'm verbose, so there's quite a bit in here, which I can go over or just trust that you've read and answer questions.
Just trying to find my nation, I, I agree that uh, Crawford County is low and I think that it would be good to revise that pay scale, uh, because of the times that you have to go out. Sometimes it's not as convenient, um, and it's something that takes some knowledge to be able to do. And not everybody's willing to, to uh, get up in the middle of the night and go out, do what needs to be done, so.
And I wonder if you may have better response from people besides me, if it's, the compensation is different as well, I haven't spoken to anyone else. Um, but I know when phone calls are made, there's a lot of notes being given and um, since I saw you last, I was called directly by DCI um, to work the jail death investigation, um, so just an added thought is that the things that Crawford is calling for kinda take all day. And that seems to be the pattern for what's, what's being investigated in this county, is the significant stuff.
I agree, um, and it takes a lot of time and uh, you've taken a lot of time to get educated on what needs to be done, taking all the classes that are necessary. Uh, you're very valuable to our county, so.
Rachel, have you talked to Dr. Crabbe?
Not about this, no. I'm in frequent communication with him, but I haven't specifically talked to him about rate stuff, um. He's told me in the past that when he takes a call that he's not billing. Um, so that I think is just um, a service he likes to provide to the community. So when it is him, I'm told he's not billing, I don't know how it works when it's Dr. Ingram or not, if they have some kind of contract or they're called based to.
Well, that, Rachel, no disrespect, I'm not saying you're not underpaid, but I'd like, I'd like to have Dr. Crabbe's blessing on this since he is kinda the head of your, I don't wanna, I don't wanna discourse amongst you or some chain of command, not being.
Right.
That's all I'm somewhat concerned about, but. I mean, you showed we're probably on line on, hey. Right, we need to be fair, I just don't want it to be on all, everything on the up and up, so no feelings get hurt or.
Right.
And I don't. Budget wise, I mean. Hopefully it ain't a big budget bust. You don't know? It shouldn't be.
Yeah, it should.
It could be.
That will, I mean, it will, because I mean, we already pay upwards of twenty five hundred to three thousand for autopsy. But it's just, I mean, it's part of that same line, I'm not saying it can't be done, it'll just require an amendment next year.
I mean, if, in the event we would have no investigations, then it wouldn't change the budget.
Right.
But that's why it's been a trick.
But that's not been the history.
No.
And I was upfront with the fact that I'm concerned that the number of investigations are on the low side, so I respect that if that system improves, that it would be a change. What is the pay for the funeral homes transporting to Incan?
Thousand, seven to a thousand, I believe.
Closer to nineteen.
Oh, is it?
I'd have to go through.
I can go through, we have the billing for it.
Um, and do they get, is that a one way or a round trip, do they have to go back and get them?
The going back is, it would be at the, the funerals, not the county's expense.
Okay, so it's a one way?
Yes. At least that's how Crawford handles it, I know other counties do it differently.
When they came here to get a raise, that was what we talked about, is we paid to go over, but the
Right.
Family or whatever, their, their insurance paid for bringing them back, that's what I remember.
Right, that's part of the funeral expenses.
We have the pay rates for some other counties with similar populations and.
That'd be good information.
Harden, uh, is three hundred and thirty five per call. Lead, MEI, three hundred dollars and two hundred and fifty for Apollis. Uh, Franklin, about Franklin, a hundred and fifty per hour, Buena Vista, it's like it's a hundred and fifty.
And they have a part-time chief deputy eminence. That's sixteen thousand dollars, the annual.
That's BV.
Yeah, that's BV, that's Buena Vista, yep.
So that'd be, the deputy would be a physician.
That's just uh, that contract to the county then, that you have a physician that just gets that wage, no matter how many they have to go out.
I don't know how it works.
See, we don't have all the facts, we just kinda have the Clinton population of forty six thousand, pays two hundred per county policy.
So Dr. Crabbe text, um, and I shared about Ida and SAC for sure and what I have been told from Cherokee, but I haven't been able to confirm it. Um, so SAC, when I last inquired, was two fifty. And Ida is paying two hundred, but I think they'll look at an increase on, for the new fiscal year. So I texted Dr. Crabbe, do you have an opinion on the board increasing the MEI call rate to be consistent with the state average, which is three hundred? He said, no, comma, not really. So that's preliminary information there, he doesn't have an opinion.
Budget concerns, I don't, your timing is, I don't know, I wish we could have this conversation in jam anyway.
Well, see, that's the tough one, you don't know how many calls there'll be, so it's not.
You go off your averages, and that's what average, that's why our budgets is based, it's off the.
Right, based on history.
Yeah, based on history, so I mean, it's pretty consistent, you're gonna have some highs and you're gonna have some lows, so.
How many did we have last year?
I, what did I say? Yeah.
Sure. And not all go to autopsy, we have to make that decision.
Right, but I mean, investigations.
Right, so, so we've got the cost for investigation, the cost for transport, the cost for autopsy. Those are the costs that I'm aware of.
Sometimes there's extra, if there's a more specific body bag that's necessary or
Okay.
You know what I mean, no, yeah, not standard.
I've been providing equipment.
Okay.
In my cases, um.
And some people get.
Because Ida County gives me a bunch of stuff and then when I go to trainings, some, they'll give you the cheap, cheap body bags. Right.
We're here for investigation.
You're right.
There's nothing that, I mean, half of the back of my car is this equipment. It's not huge, it's like Ford escape size, but there's nothing equipment wise that I've personally asked of the county.
Talking, if there's six this next year, you're talking twelve hundred dollars.
I just think that having to get out of bed in the middle of the night possibly, or weekends and all the new training, um, I'd like to see it come up a little bit, you know, maybe three hundred and thirty five dollars per car, call in Hardens, you know, private.
Just double advocate, are we gonna, from the volunteer EMS or fire department coming in, are they gonna get up in the middle of the night to, they're specifically trained in certain situations that remember the discussion we had, we're just trying to get them a tax credit for the months and months, we can decide on any.
And I think people were fine with most of it, except for extending it on to, you know, that was the only part that seemed.
Well, and we didn't end up doing anything, cause there were so many gray areas and.
I think one of the issues with the tax credit was that it benefited some and not others, so.
Another huge.
They argue that, but that'll affect some and not others as well.
This is benefiting people that you've appointed to do this job. This isn't like, hey, I just.
And I'm not against it, I'm just seeing what the repercussions could possibly be.
Right, and that's your job.
Yeah, so I, I get all of the thoughts there, um, but this you know, it's not a volunteer, well, we call it visitor, volunteer positions.
Appointed.
So there's a little difference there.
But some don't have, I don't think, it's just a flat rate.
What, what direction do we need to go on this?
I don't know what direction I need to go yet, it was just torn, it's a deal.
I get it.
Just any flat amount?
Yeah.
So you guys have some thought on it?
Oh, what you're pointing out, I, I'd like to just keep it simple, flat rate, like what you did Rick about.
Yeah, unless there's a financial benefit to, to splitting hairs with mileage. I was kind of okay with dropping the mileage part and.
There, makes sense.
I mean, that's all over the board, it's as low as five cents, or fifty cents, sorry.
But my husband in Manila versus the ones I've done in Chiron for free, because I was already there as EMS is a big difference on mileage, I mean, not big, but when you consider the call rate is one hundred and then you look. is a big difference on mileage. I mean, not big, but when you consider the call rate is one hundred, and then you look at mileage from, could be from zero to, I don't know, seventy, or it's a big unknown there as well.
Other counties, you know, that don't have an MEI, or can't.
I don't know.
Do they subcontract in other counties?
I don't know that, um, each county is required to have an ME, who's the physician, but, um, that person doesn't have to live within county. So like.
The ME doesn't?
No, so like Dr. Hesse lives in Mapleton and he's Ida right now, but he's resigning, so.
Well, and as people resign, you know, how do you get somebody interested in taking the training that you need, and how do you, you know, keep a good?
The, one thing I've seen, because I've been vocal about the work I do, is that now other people are like, oh, how do you do that, like? So there's a little more interest on the investigation level, just, I think, because of word of mouth. Um, but the problem we're gonna have in Crawford is when Dr. Crabbe needs to retire. I've been told by two or three people that there's no one at CCMH that wants that role, and so I think at that point, it'd be interesting to maybe have a lead MEI or someone who can help structure the system or recruit other people. Um, because I, I feel like getting a, a physician replacement is gonna be an issue, as demonstrated by the fact that last weekend, I don't know when it was, there was one when Dr. Ingram was called and, and was not available, um. And then Dr. Lothrup is no longer here, who was the other deputy, so we're already down a deputy. I don't know, I'm getting on a tangent.
Well, um, do you need to gather more research? Is that what you guys are thinking, or?
No, I, I'm glad that Dr. Crabbe responded back to you right away, so I just know that, he's on board with it, doesn't have an opinion one way or the other.
You know, oh, so what he's saying is that all these years, he's just kind of done it, uh, as part of his.
I don't know about all these years.
Okay.
But after the, so on our, our grain bin death, um, he and I went down there and worked that, um, obviously, fire and EMS had been there for several hours already. Then we were on scene for several hours, then we went to the funeral home, and then we went back to Dr. Crabbe's house, it was like one in the morning. Um, and, and talked about some, finished the paperwork and then talked about some other things, and so I know in, in recent times, if he's handling the call, whether that's by phone or in person, which he's not doing in person right now, due to medical needs, um, I don't believe he's invoicing, and you're not seeing those come through. So other than that, it's Dustin, Pat, who lives in Battle Creek, so I don't know how often.
Yeah, I can't tell you, I, I would have to look again.
Spring and Dr. Ingram right now, and me. So I guess my answer is, I don't know how, for how long he's been donating his time. Um, but I think he sees it as a service to the community.
Got it.
That has not been able to be filled by anybody else.
Is he technically retired from the hospital at this time, so it's?
He does this, and I think he was doing like FAA physicals, the pilots.
Okay.
And that's it, but right now, he's not doing any, any out of house stuff.
And the time will come where he's not doing any of those things.
Right, or doesn't want to, because we'd all like to be retired at some point.
At some point in time, so. Alright, we have, you know, information on other counties, we, you know, uh, have the, what she's proposing, and so.
Just throwing thoughts out there, since we're in open discussion, I mean, we can either rip the Band-Aid off and, and go state average, and or we could take it off in two bites, and raise it some now, and then readdress it next January.
And, uh, take the mileage part off, 'cause she was willing to consider that.
Or you just, I guess I'm just speaking out loud, I'm just.
Yeah, go ahead, that's what we're doing, getting the thoughts out there.
Either way, I can get mine in, I mean, if we're concerned about having to do a budget amendment, you're still, we're talking twelve hundred dollars. Twelve hundred.
Oh, that's if we went up to three hundred, right?
If we went up to three hundred and had six calls.
So we have a hundred this, this year, and put a hundred in January into the next fiscal year, or even an additional twenty-five bucks or so.
Do you know how many we've had this year?
No, I don't.
Should take two hundred, I don't know.
Seems fair.
Uh.
Seems fair.
I don't.
Then I'd probably ask for the mileage to be left on there.
Makes sense, they're in Kyron and already there, or you have to go down.
My, my just, yeah, mileage is mileage, I'm not, I'm not averaging, taking that away, you know, we're using your vehicles, so. Where it's up and down.
Right.
So, yeah, I guess there is one equipment item I was reimbursed for, and that was bags of ice and charter out, because if we were gonna be able to, um, work with the donor network, uh, we needed to start cooling the decedent, um, but there was a hard and fast twelve-hour rule on that, and we hit twelve hours and thirty minutes, and so then they said, no, thank you, so. The county did pay for three, fifteen pounds of ice, I think.
Oh.
How many do you know, does Dr. Crabbe do himself?
I don't know, I don't have access to that data without, I guess, asking him. The things I do know, because I'm on the ground on the EMS side, is there are, um, some situations that are handled maybe by phone and photographs, um, law enforcement is encouraged to do the photography, not EMS in those cases, where some uh, and decedents do need to be sent for autopsy, but there are times when no one is going physically to scene. When he makes those decisions by, by phone with photography, is my understanding.
Something not everybody thinks about, how that all works and how we find out, and, you know, what decisions are made.
And that's, the autopsy decision is probably the hardest part.
Absolutely, I mean, and if you don't get that right, there could be clues.
Right, and we're not, we have to make that decision independently without the family's wishes, which they generally have wishes one way or another.
Sure, and sometimes they don't agree with what you're thinking, and that makes it, I guess, that's a very delicate time.
Right.
I'm making motion, remove it, two hundred dollars. Vacation mileage.
Readdress it next January, budget revisited January. Second.
Alright, any further discussion? If not, I'll call and vote, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Any votes, nay? Chair votes, I, motion has been approved.
And it's using our standard mileage.
Standard?
Yeah, for the rest, where he goes.
What county mileage?
Federal, right?
County has a lot did, so, alright, thank you, Rachel, for all you do, and.
Anything else I can?
Hopefully, you don't get, get busy.
Yeah, for, right, for many reasons, yes. I did, though, I will say, I declined one, uh, because I said they pronounce the death at St. Anthony's, and that's not, and Dr. Crabbe doesn't necessarily have this, use the same information that I use, from, from the state, but I said, if it was pronounced in West Side, then I would come, but if it's pronounced at St. Anthony, that's not Crawford's responsibility, jurisdiction, I guess.
Thank you.
Oh, just, uh, keep in back of your mind, like, next December, January, we'll be getting a budget time, it might be good timing to come give us an update to help.
Yeah, and then we'd have some numbers, maybe.
Right.
All in number.
Kinda go from there.
Okay, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all you do, Rachel, thank you. Alrighty, so, now we have to discuss take action on the natural gas connection at city center.
And you, Dave? Alright.
Dave, you're right on time, what's the word on that?
Well, Black Hills came to do their annual, um, meter inspection, and there's a gas leak on the inside of the building by the, uh, meters and stuff, and the pipe comes in where the threads are and stuff, or whatever. So we have to make a decision, one time we discussed, I think, eliminating the four, just having one outside, and they wouldn't ever have to go inside to do any other checking or anything like that, um, and if they replace it, go to one, there'd be no cost to us, except for getting plumbed from the outside meter into, to hook up to what's existing there.
Get it done.
And, uh, the other choice is that they just come and fix the leak, and, because they were responsible for it before that, but I would just eliminate the four meters and go to one, since we're just gonna be one.
Yep.
That's what I do.
Yep.
Get it out while we're in the process.
In the right way.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the relocation of gas meter and elimination of four for one, and we will pay for the cost to get it.
Have a former company.
Yep, get it done right.
Okay, because right now, the gas. I could have shut it off, other four fixes, those are two choices.
Alright, any further discussion? We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? That'll call the motion, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Any votes, same sign? Thank you, Dave, appreciate you keeping an eye on all that for us. Alright, we have a discussion, take action on the tax abatement for nineteen thirteen two hundred and sixtieth street Benson.
So Seth talked yesterday morning about that, he's actually gone at his kid's preschool graduation. Um, but he said it, everything meets the.
Other than the, the address may change, depending on where they put their driveway, you know, so.
Right.
Otherwise, he recommended it for approval.
And that's new home, and have, they haven't started it yet?
Haven't started.
Okay.
That's my cost, seven fifty, so.
Alright.
Everything meets the criteria.
Perfect, alright, we have a motion.
Also move.
Alright, very good, any further discussion, otherwise I'll call and vote, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Chair votes, I, it's been approved. Alright, next we have a closed session discussion with the hazardous pipeline ordinance and potential.
You wanna do your citizen's input and stuff first, or, no, I'm just saying, since you got everybody on board.
We will do that, is there any citizen input before we go into closed session, just in case there's something you've been waiting to talk about, so we don't have to wait through the closed session? Raise a hand if you have anything for, uh, citizen input, otherwise we will call, uh, a motion to go into closed session. See no close, raised hands, alright?
Well, I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Alright.
Second.
Second.
Alright, got two seconds, all in favor, I?
Aye.
We are now in closed session, so we'll need to.